Okay, we'll reconvene into regular session. Is there any action to take?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for Councilman Vaughn as Deputy Mayor pro tem. And also with that motion to make Councilman Gilmore as Mayor pro tem.
Second.
Okay, you put that in form of motion, correct?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I did, yeah, Neil's second.
Okay, Neil's second. Okay. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to consent agenda. All of the items on the consent agenda.
We have the proclamation here.
Oh, excuse me. Proclamation coming up today will be for the National Trails Day and Councilman Vaughn is going to be presenting that. Is anyone here to accept this? Just come up, please.
Mr. Monahan.
On behalf of the city of Louisville, I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas interest in outdoor recreational opportunities including walking, biking, hiking, canoeing, and kayaking is on the rise with local residents and visitors. And whereas trails in the city of Louisville, Texas enhance the quality of life for our citizens, increase tourist activity in the county, and provide alternative transportation routes for non-motorized vehicles. And whereas National Trail Day is an opportunity to increase public awareness of the city of Louisville, Texas, trail opportunities and diverse outdoor recreation activities, and promote the importance of a local, regional, and national network of trails and greenways. And whereas trail activities are enjoyed by people of all ages and abilities and are an important part of the city of Louisville, Texas, outdoor recreation resources. And whereas citizens are encouraged to participate in the Trails Day activities scheduled in the city of Louisville, Texas, and the region to strengthen their commitment to preserving the natural scenic and recreational qualities of the city of Louisville, Texas, trails. And now therefore, I, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Louisville, Texas, along with members of the city council, do hereby proclaim June 4th, 2016 as National Trail Days in Denton County, city of Louisville, Texas, and urge all citizens to participate in a National Trails Day event or recreate at a park or trail on National Trails Day proclaimed this 16th of May, 2016. Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Louisville. Would you like to say something, say a few words?
I'd just like to say thank you, Mayor, Council, for all of your continued support. We very much appreciate it and we have some great things coming up in the next couple of years and with the Vision 2025 Plan. And we're very excited for your support and your encouragement as we move forward.
Thank you very much for all of your support.
Okay, our next item is Visitor Citizens Forum. At this time, any person with business for the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items and I do not have requests to speak. Now we're down to item H, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. And we do have one item to be pulled. It's item three on the award for wrecker service. And that's the only one. Councilman Gilmore.
Move to approve as written.
Except for number three?
Except for three.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item three, I'll just read the caption. Approval of a contract award for service, wrecker service to Brad's Towing Service, Louisville, Texas, and authorizing for the city manager to execute the contract. Councilman Gilmore, there has been a request to table this indefinitely.
Move to table three.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to table indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Okay. We have a second. Councilman Vaughn on the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to regular hearings. Item eight. Consideration of a final plat of Castle Hills Village Center lots 2R-1 through 2R-12, 2R-13X, 2R-14 through 2R-20, 2R-21X, 2R-22, and 3R-2R Block A, located on the southeast corner of King Arthur Boulevard and Lady Lord Lane. Comments: The plat has five variances associated with the development, including A) to allow townhouse two zoning for lots 2R-1 through 2R-21X of Block A; B) to allow lots 2R-4 through 2R-20 Block A to front onto a private access easement with 10-foot sidewalk and utility easement in lieu of a public street; and C) to allow lots 2R-1, 2R-19, and 2R-20 Block A to have a minimum lot dimensions less than the required 75-foot minimum depth; D) to allow lots 2R-17 through 2R-20 Block A to have a minimum garage setback of 18 feet in lieu of the required 20 foot from the back of curb; and E) to waive the alley requirement for lots less than 10,000 square feet. PNZ recommended approval by vote of seven to zero. Recommendation is that the city council approve the plat and associated variances set forth in the caption above. Councilman Jones.
Mayor move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine. Consideration of variance to the 1996 Castle Hills Agreement Regarding Screening Devices for Castle Hills Village Shops Phase Five Lot 2R-22 Block A. Comments: Variance to the screening device requirement is requested because the subject property is being developed as a mixed-use infill product adjacent to a proposed townhouse development that will share a common access easement. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Daniels.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance as written.
Okay. Say okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, say, if you're against, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10. Consideration of a request to utilize Toyota of Louisville Railroad Park for the CASA of Denton County Total Tag Triathlon Fundraising Event and a consideration of a variance to the special events permit fees. Comments: CASA of Denton County is planning the fifth annual triathlon event for June 12th, 2016 at Toyota of Louisville Railroad Park. CASA is requesting a waiver of fees and use of city property for the event. The total amount of the request for waiver of fees for this event is $7,398.40. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance and use of city property as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Vaughn.
May I make a motion that we approve the variance and the use of city property as stated in the caption?
Second.
Okay, we have, oh yeah, we also have Chair Gideon with CASA here if there's any questions. So I will now go if there's any questions. No. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Gideon. Item 11. Consideration of ordinance amending Section 6-121 and 9.5-121 of the Louisville City Code to amend tree requirements. Comments: Staff has attached two versions of an ordinance to amend tree removal and mitigation requirements for city council consideration. Both versions specify when approval will be required to remove trees and impose additional penalties if trees are removed without prior approval from the city. Version one proposes tree species that can be removed from the approved tree list and proposed tree species that can be added to the protected tree list. Version two excludes these changes to the tree list. Recommendation is that the city council approve either version one or two of the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Ferguson.
Yes, Mayor. Just a quick comment on this. We have two different options to consider. In either case, you'll have the same number of trees on the list whether you choose one or the other. I would advocate for version one and the reason you've heard partly because of something that I also recently raised in council meeting and in workshop. I had asked that our staff look at the list of trees and determine if they really deserve, if trees really deserve to be on that list or should we reexamine. And had already expressed some real concerns about the pear trees becoming an invasive species and the Chinese pistachio. All of those in the pear trees are not even native to the United States. They all came from China. So version one substitutes three trees that are native and so I would ask that we approve version one, again noting that it does not increase or decrease the tree count but improves the particular species in which we're protecting.
Okay, you want to put that in form of a motion?
Yes, I move to approve version one of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Who was that on second?
Right.
Okay, Councilman Daniels on the second.
Daniels.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending Section 6-121 and 9.5-121 of the Louisville City Code amending tree removal and mitigation requirements, deleting tree species from approved tree lists, adding tree species to protected tree lists, establishing penalties and additional mitigation requirements for unauthorized removal, providing a repealer severability and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12. Consideration of an ordinance approving the negotiated settlement between Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corp., Mid-Tech Division, regarding the company's 2006 rate review mechanism filings. Declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement. Comments: On March 1, 2016, Atmos made a rate review mechanism tariff filing requesting $35.4 million additional revenue on a system-wide basis. The RRM tariff has been utilized for these provisions in three filings and rate cases. The proposed ordinance with its attachments approve the negotiated rate settlement of $29.9 million, resolving the 2016 RRM filing and implementing the rate change. Recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Gilmore.
Move to approve as written.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and the Atmos Energy Company Mid-Tech Division regarding the company's 2016 rate review mechanism filings, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with a negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses. Determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause, declaring an effective date, declaring an emergency, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to reports. We have the quarterly investment report from January 1, 16, to March 31, 16, and your backup. Nika, we'll start with you. Do you have anything?
Mayor, we left a little present in the boxes for mayor and council. It's our annual economic development report for year 14 and 15. Hope you have a chance to take a look at it. The highlights of the report is that just in the past two years, through the approval of the agreements, economic development agreements, Louisville has created 2,500 new jobs in Louisville. Our top 10 employers really expanded in the past few years in Louisville and altogether they employ about 14,000 people in Louisville.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Let us know if you have any questions on the report after your review.
Okay. Okay. Chief? Ms. Callahan?
Counsel, I just wanted to remind you that this Friday, we're going to have our celebration of all of our employees who have served the city for 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years. It will be a picnic and it will be held at the Wayne Ferguson Park. We will begin at 11:30. I will start presenting the awards to the employees around noon, so we would love for you guys to join us. We'll be having fajitas, I believe, for lunch.
There we go. Chief?
Mr. Lake Man.
We stand at half a foot above conservation pool. Can I have nothing else?
It's looking better, so. Jim? Nothing? Hey, CEO?
Yes, sir. Update on I-35. This is a follow-up from David Solomon's report a couple of meetings ago. So Fox Avenue this Friday will be closed to overpass for pedestrian and vehicles at 9:00 PM. And then the north and southbound lanes underneath Fox will close at 10:00 PM and will remain that way, I believe, until, I think, 6:00 AM in the morning. This will be repeated on Saturday. In addition to that, both your entry ramps, north and south of Fox, will also be closed down at 9:00 as well. No sense in getting on if you've got to get right back off. The detours will be on the Frontage Road, AGL, and Tech Dot will be monitoring that, so that is happening this Friday and Saturday night.
Okay. Councilman Daniels.
Yes, Mayor. This Thursday, this coming Thursday, Classroom One at the MCL Grand, there is the Rainy Day Rain Barrel class. It's going to be presented by Keep Louisville Beautiful. There is a $30 charge on this one and I do know at this point it is sold out, but I believe that if you contact Keep Louisville Beautiful and get with Amy, you may be able to get on a waiting list. So this is a great one because you're paying for the supplies and when you leave, you'll have your own rain barrel that you can save water and save some of your irrigation waters. So that's a good one there. And then last, I want to welcome Councilman Jones. I served with him on PNZ and look forward to serving with him on the council. Thank you.
I just want to say glad to finally be here. Seems like I've been waiting forever. I look forward to working with the great staff and the awesome councilmen here and to serve in the city. Thank you.
You do have somebody in the audience you want to recognize, don't you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all you, the mayor. My lovely wife, Sherrell, who will allow me to spend my time with the council, and my sisters next to her. I want to thank them for coming out.
Welcome. Councilman Gilmore.
Mayor, I want to thank you that we don't have to go to a new election to replace this poor guy if he hadn't have done that. So I'd like to just quickly remind folks, hey, on June 18th, best little brew fest in Texas, the Fourth Annual, of course, the third one here in Old Town is going to happen and it's in support of Alzheimer's Association caregivers and teen suicide prevention. It's a great program. It's a lot of fun and we look forward to seeing a bunch of people in Old Town. In addition to that, school is almost out, folks. Only a couple of weeks to go and for those of you who have kids that are looking for something to do or you're thinking you need to give them something to do, the summer reading program starts up with the library on June 4th, so just go to the city website and you can get more information, but that has always been a great way for me to keep my kids occupied. I'm sure other people will find it very useful as well. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything?
Mayor and council, I just want to take a few minutes to thank Chief Tittle for the incredible event that his department put on this last Friday night, Keeping Tradition Alive. First time held in Wayne Ferguson Plaza and just absolutely incredible event. Chief, if you add the stats, the number of pipers we had in and honor guard, it was a record and the attendance at the event, James told me today, he thought was around 3,000 people, which is just incredible attendance.
Well, according to Chief McGrath, who is the actual backbone of this event, he's the sole planner of this event. This is his baby. He loves doing it and I've already challenged him this morning to see what he's going to come up with for our 10th anniversary next year. So look forward to that and please stand by and hopefully it'll be a great event next year. But the numbers this year, we actually, he usually allows only 100 pipers, 100 drummers, and 100 honor guard members to sign up to try to get to the 300. He actually had over 100 drummers. That usually fills up real quick. And then just under 100 on the pipers and the honor guard members. So we were just a hair under 300. Great event. We had representation from 19 states and 44 counties in the state of Texas alone. So people come from all over the United States to attend this event. Several are yearly. I mean, they come back every year. They'll tell you that as soon as they see the announcement on the website that it's ready for signup, they immediately, by the end of that day, have their plane booked, their registration done, and are ready to come back. So it's become a big event and attended very well and very much appreciated by the members of these organizations all across the United States who are trying to put their bands together, put their honor guards together, and are trying to hone their skills to be available when duty calls for them, be it a line of duty death, a retirement reception, or whatever they're needed for, a city parade, those types of events. So thank you very much for recognizing it.
Anything else? Okay. Councilman Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to welcome the Honorable Councilman Brandon Jones. It's probably the first time you've heard all those words in one sentence. And it's going to be a real pleasure, honor to work with you. I know you'll wear that title well. I'm positive you're going to be a great addition to the council and I'm just delighted to see you down there at the other end. So welcome to the council. Go get 'em, tiger. And to your wife and to your sister, congratulations to you. I know y'all are proud and he'll do a great job. So just pleased to have him. I wanted to talk about KTA a little bit. So first of all, Chief Tittle, congratulations. Fantastic event. Congratulations to Chief McGrath, too. I know he was running around like crazy all the whole time with something, but it was a flawless event. It was certainly well-attended as far as the outdoor. Didn't know how the park would go off as a location, but I think it went well. May tweak a few things, but I think it went real well. It's great to hear the guys that attend this talk about how any other time they get together, it's a funeral. It's, you know, it's not a fun time for them, but it's certainly a time of honor and respect and they pursue that duty with great dignity. But this is an opportunity for them to hone their skills and learn. These are the comments I heard. And to have a good time with each other, have that camaraderie that they, especially with other cities, that they wouldn't normally get a chance to have. So it's a fantastic event. The public loves it. I know the attendees love it and so I just want to thank you for all y'all do to put that together.
If I could make one more comment, though, I know we get a lot of the accolades for this event, but this event does not happen without the teamwork of a lot of other members of this city organization. Pals does a big job in helping with set out, Public Services with closing the streets, Citizens Visitors Bureau with the planning of it all. So this is a team effort. I know we get a lot of the praise for it, but this is a team effort from a lot of our members.
So for the second time in less than a week, you stole my thunder and, because I, that's all right. I said that Thursday morning, you kind of stole my thunder, although that's good. That was the other comment I was going to make is that it's an all-hands-on-deck process to put this on and certainly everybody across the city departments deserve congratulations for making it such a great, fun, you know, it's different. And it's one of the things that's very neat about it is that you can go to, you know, a taste oven in another city, but you can't go to a KTA anyplace else. And so it's a real joy to have that and I'm very proud that the city of Louisville has that opportunity to do that. So thanks to everyone, but certainly a big thanks to you in your department for putting the event, the core event, together. So otherwise, I want to mention one other thing, fire department related, and that's Aiden McHittick, and I think everybody here probably knows, but just a reminder, Aiden's still in the hospital. He's lost part of his leg. He's doing better, but he's got a long road ahead. And there is a GoFundMe site that's, I think, actually, last time I looked, it topped 36,000, I think, out of 50. I suspect 50 is not going to be all that they'll need in the end, so it'd be nice to see that GoFundMe site go way past that goal, and it can. And so just remind everybody that Aiden's the son of Austin McHittick, one of our firefighters, accidentally injured in a very unfortunate accident, boating accident. So keep him in mind, keep in your thoughts and prayers, and go visit the GoFundMe site and don't be afraid to go back more than once. And it doesn't matter how much, just anything helps. So MCL Grand, and then I'll wrap up. We have an LISD Job Olympics coming up, May 19th. We have Saving for a Rainy Day, which is a Rain Barrel class presented by Keep Louisville Beautiful, also on the 19th. We have LISD Reel Voices Film Festival, REEL spelled R-E-E-L, May 21st. We have an Economic Recovery Workshop presented by the city of Louisville on May 26th. And then art exhibits. We have Recycled into Art that's gone from May 5th will continue through July 2nd in the North Corridor Gallery or the Educational Wing, whichever way you want to call it. And Strictly Texas, an exhibit, May 7th through June 13th in the main gallery. And I'm going to jump to a couple of other things. The Sounds of Louisville is going to kick off on June 7th with Texas Floods. So we got a good sampling of Texas Flood at KTA, but they'll be onstage and they were very popular last year. And for a guy who went to school with Steve Vaughn, I told the, they're And for a guy who went to school with Steve Vaughn, I told their performer, he channels Steve, so... and I get to say that because I knew him. He does a fantastic job. And then the other one is that's... everybody ought to put on their calendar is a family picnic in the plaza. First time we're going to do that. I think it'll be a lot of fun, and that's May 21st, so mark your calendar for that. And with that long list, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Vaughn?
Well, Mayor, I'd just like to say welcome to Councilman Jones and to thank his wife and sister for being here and for the support that they seem to be showing for him. Appreciate you all very much.
Counselor?
The city secretary. Good work on the election, and you keep coming back with those type of totals that come up. I wasn't too concerned about the numbers, but the percentages looked real good. And congratulations to the police and fire on that. That will help out for quite a few years. We just got to start working on the next tab when it comes up, so. Officer, thanks for you and all your teammates with the City of Louisville for the work you do. Thank you.
Next item is closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, item one, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and two, Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will now go into closed session.